Any questions on the fund balance projections as we go?
Member lessons.
I just, I wanted to reflect on, you know, a year ago, we talked about spending the fund balance down to the board minimum. So is this essentially $53 million that has accrued in part because of our vacancies and attrition? Because we've, we've put some one-time state funds in this into the fund balance. But, but this $53 million has essentially accrued over the past year.
Uh, yes, a lot of it was due to the one-time state money that we got. But, you know, even more so, it would be to those vacancies as we experienced 400 or 450 kind of continual vacancies. That succeeded what we've put in our budget for attrition. So yeah, I mean, that's, that's the bulk of it. We did push some money at the end of last year into our, uh, to spend out the remaining Easter grants for SIRS. So I believe that was five millionish or so that we were able to, uh, spend out that grant and essentially put it into fund balance for the board to direct later on.
Member Higgins.
Yeah, what's a, you, you have a number for the number of vacancies and what are we anticipating in the future? The salaries haven't changed dramatically with the, the country is still losing teachers and we're not replacing them. And so are we projecting forward that that's going to continue to grow or what from budget standpoint?
Yeah, whether it continues to grow or it just stays consistent, you know, I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of relief unless we do something fairly drastic with the, the wage scale. Cause there's a lot of competition out there, particularly for our, the, the folks in the paraprofessional wage ban, you know, that 15, 20, $25 an hour ban. There's a whole lot of competition out there for those workers.
And you said, you said there was a 60-day waiting period before you get group health insurance?
Uh, for some groups, yeah, I think on the district plan, not necessarily on the AEA trust, but the, the district's health plan requires a 60-day waiting period.
And just most employers do less than that because you got a 60-day period with COVID to say yes. And if you don't need it, you don't say yes, you don't have to pay for the whole insurance or go without. So it's a little bit surprising that way to me.
That is something that was noted in our recent benefits audit. It's been a longstanding practice here, um, but we're waiting for the findings of those audit. And I'm sure that's something that will be addressed there that we'll, we'll take a look at.
Thank you.
I don't see any questions online, Mr. Ratliff, I think you can proceed.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Katie Parrot to go through our actual pro forma calculations.
All right. So as you know, and I know that you've been very well informed, um, in the way that our funding works and that the vast majority is provided by our state entitlement funds, which is provided through the foundation formula that is, uh, as you know, driven by our enrollment, um, and then multiplied through the formula to provide us an adjusted ADN that that's, that then is, uh, provided with the BSA. So that provides the bulk of our funding and that's the basis of our revenue projection. So here is a summary sheet of the basic revenue projection that we put together. And, um, you'll see that it is comprised of the local revenue, the state revenue and federal revenue. Um, a couple of things to note that's set aside by the red, uh, bars is that this, uh, this sheet, conservative increase in our interest earnings for FY25, um, as well as some other adjustments, uh, based on, let's see. Uh, a decrease of some user fees based on what we're actually collecting, um, that gives us a, uh, decrease in our local revenue. Um, additionally, uh, primarily because of the, uh, not including the one-time funds and also projecting a decline in foundation funding. We're looking at a decline or decrease of around 33 million in state revenue. And of course, we know that that can change at the end of session, but this is what we have to work with in the moment. Um, as well as some very small adjustments of federal revenue, um, and increase. So that gives us a total, uh, projection of, uh, 63 million decrease. However, uh, a large portion of that is going to change based on, um, the school board deciding to pull in a portion of our available fund balance. So in, in getting into the way that we put together our projections for, um, the expenditure side, one of the things to, to note, and I know that you're very familiar with this, but the vast majority of the expenditures are personnel. So we're approximately an 85-15 split in the operating fund between personnel costs and non-personnel costs. Um, and so, uh, a couple of the changes that are included in our pro forma include moving the, uh, teaching positions that are currently funded in the remaining portion of our ESR funds, which is our COVID relief funds, making sure that those are preserved in this model in the operating fund, as well as doing an adjustment, uh, based on the, um, the, the reduction in enrollment, uh, so doing a reduction of 36 FTE in teaching positions, uh, based on that, the metrics that the district uses to, um, allocate those staff positions. And it also includes, um, an amount that we set aside, knowing that we have unsettled contracts, um, coming up and that we wanted to make sure that there was something in there to, uh, account for that cost. Uh, so this gives you a look at the, uh, year-to-year comparison for the FTEs that are provided in the general fund. And you'll see that at the bottom, uh, part of the chart, there was the 164 FTE positions that I mentioned that are currently being covered by the Easter funds. Um, and those have been moved to the 100, uh, function 100 at the top that circled in the red. Um, it just so happens that the difference is, uh, 2,164, but that also includes that adjustment down of the 36 FTEs for the teaching positions and the metrics-based staffing adjustment.
Member lessons, question?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm what I think is my understanding that if we look back to FY20, that if you were to tally the federal stimulus paid for, um, FTE for instruction, that we would still see alignment, we would see an overall decrease in total number of instruction because we have lost enrollment and we have kept pace with that over time. Is that correct? So when you add the, the, um, instruction due that we paid for through federal relief funds to what we've paid for in the past four years to, through general fund, we would still see that the metrics have governed the total number of instruction positions. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be correct. Um, so you would see a decline, part of that's going to be based on enrollment, but part of that's going to be based on the increase in PTR that we did for FY24.
All right. So here is a compilation, a summary sheet of the salaries and wages. And you'll see, as we mentioned at the bottom, there's been some additional lines that have been set aside, um, kind of so that you can see what the actual amounts are for those adjustments that were made. Um, and this, uh, for FY25 includes all of the current staffing positions that we have with the increases that are provided in the existing negotiated agreements that have been approved by the board. So it's applying, um, all of our contractual obligations to the different, uh, groups, as well as, uh, including amounts for the salaries and wages that will be moved over, um, uh, in the plan for the Easter funded staff. It shows an amount that's been set aside for potential unsettled contracts. Um, and then also less, uh, the, the reduction of those 36 FTEs. So that's what the dollars and cents look like in our projections, uh, for salaries and wages. Next you'll see that there is, uh, the other payroll-related costs, um, the estimates for those which are projected to increase. Um, with the exception of, um, as, uh, Mr. Ratliff discussed, uh, we are seeing a trend up in our attrition and vacancies, uh, that has exceeded our projections. So assuming that, um, uh, we are going to see a similar trend in this next year as some of the agreements are, um, are settled and maybe, um, we're doing some recruitment and retention strategies. We did, uh, increase that amount that is based on what we're seeing, the trend and what we're seeing. This amount is still a conservative adjustment, um, in terms of, it doesn't match what the actual attrition is, but more taking into consideration that we will, uh, hopefully, uh, as planned, fill some of those vacancies. And some of our efforts will work toward, um, you know, making sure that our positions are staffed. And then at the bottom, you'll see, uh, these are the benefits portions. So those increase at the approximate rates of the other projected salaries and wages increases. And then at the bottom, you'll see we have added the proportions for the Easter funded positions, uh, an amount for potential unsettled contracts, um, the, uh, adjustment for metrics-based staff. And then we also included an adjustment to the amount set aside for benefits attrition, uh, based on two things, again, the vacancies and attrition that we're seeing, but also, uh, the waiver of benefits.
Right, and I'll speak to this one. This was a graph we put together to show what the historical attrition was. Just to give you kind of a mind's eye of what, of kind of what those total amounts are. So this is really what our adopted budget was versus how much money we actually spent. So you see in 2013, uh, we budgeted for some amount of money of, of, for salaries and benefits, and we didn't spend 5.4 million of that. You can see that just steadily growing over time. There's a few anomalies, um, like in 2023, you'll see it spike up. And a lot of that's just due to us, like I said, shifting money into the, the SIRS grant. So as that kind of shifted, we threw off the budget actuals that year. But expecting this year to have about 44 million in total attrition, um, just through unfilled positions. And that's, that, it's not above our attrition rate, but that's just the total amount. I believe we've got about 28 million or so in the budget for that. One other thing to note too, is with our benefit, the amount we put in there, if we were to have to severely, uh, or eliminate positions and you eliminate the vacant positions and you have more filled positions, that's going to affect your vacancy rate as well. So just want to kind of give you an idea of the historical of, uh, that attrition rate and how we've been trying to chase that up over the years. But it's, um, it's been a struggle to get those positions filled, and I think this chart pretty well describes that.
Right. Uh, so moving on to, uh, the non-personnel expenditures side of the budget. This is 15% of the general fund budget, um, as projected. Um, you'll see that this, uh, chart kind of shows the, um, the, the planned division of expenses and, um, what, what we're paying for in that non-personnel expenditure section. So, uh, you'll see that, um, you know, there's about 20% for, let's see, I can't read the thing. For, for our supplies, a much smaller proportion that's for capital outlay. And then, um, the largest portion is in contracted services. And that might look like a, a very large slice of the pie, but one of the things that the, the board should remember is that some of those, uh, contracted services are specifically because we have, um, vacancies. So as you know, because you, you have authorized some of the transfers in those areas, there are some services that we're legally obligated to provide to students. And, um, there's some money that's being shifted when we have vacant positions into, you know, providing those services another way. So, uh, we are projecting, uh, a little under, uh, or a little over 2% of an increase of about 2 million. Um, and there's two areas that, um, kind of are the most impactful in this area for the change. One is in, uh, providing funding for the technology maintenance agreement. So all of the systems that we have in place, um, and, and would like to continue moving forward. And then the other one, um, to point out is, uh, projected decrease in the amount that we receive in indirect cost recovery. So we have an indirect rate that's applied to our federal funds and our grant funds that, that helps provide support for the administrative cost of operating and overseeing and managing those funds. Uh, we're projecting to see a decrease in the rate that's authorized to, to be able to bring some of those, uh, funds over to cover, um, general fund expenses. And so that is, um, that's one of the major, uh, changes in the pro forma. So this brings us to our, uh, preliminary budget gap, what, what we're projecting. Um, and this slide, the summary sheet looks a little bit different, I think, than the board has seen previously. And, and one of the reasons is because we have, uh, not included the fund balance within the, um, the main sheet just because the, the amount that circled in red, the 98 million, really shows you the true budget gap, the true difference between the revenues we expect to come, uh, to the district versus the expenditures that we're projecting to, um, uh, to have on the books in this next year. Um, so, uh, if however, uh, the available fund balance is pulled in, you'll see at the bottom there that the 53 million that's projected to be available for use in the budget, that leaves a, uh, budget gap of about 45 million. Um, so, uh, the size of the, the budget gap, uh, really requires, is going to require a variety of strategies to address it. Um, there's not going to be one solution that, uh, gives us a balanced budget. As Mr. Ratliff noticed or, or mentioned, um, as we move forward, he'll be providing updates, uh, as to what might be available. So this number could change, as you know, all of these numbers are subject to change. But this gives you an idea of what the district is facing moving into FY25. Also of note, uh, for the transportation fund, uh, we've done a similar analysis and projection of the, uh, revenues that we're expecting to receive versus the expenditures. Um, as you know, we receive a grant from the state of Alaska that's a formula grant that has not been adjusted in many, many years. Um, and during that period of time, the expenses and the cost of doing business has significantly increased. Uh, we have applied a fairly conservative estimate of the increases in each one of the expenditure areas. Um, and so we, uh, based on the amount that we're expecting to receive, um, uh, to support those expenditures, we are projecting approximately a $3.6 million deficit in that fund. So, um, this slide demonstrates, uh, kind of the division in the different, uh, functional areas of our budget, where the money is going. And you see, you can see that as a school district, the vast majority of our funds are being, um, expended in the area of, of instruction. Uh, that's what we would expect to see and like to see. But we also have many other portions of the budget that we have to direct, um, funds. You know, we have to run payroll, uh, we have to, um, do certain functions. We have to keep, uh, our buildings operating and, uh, maintained. And so this shows you kind of the different areas within the budget and their proportions, um, in the general fund as a whole. And so this, uh, essentially is just a, a slide, uh, to kind of visually reflect the, the difference and the gap between what that structural, uh, deficit moving forward is, is versus what it, uh, could be with bringing in fund balance. But I think one of the things that's really important to note, and I know that the board is well aware of this, is, is use of fund balance at this level is really a one-time fix. It's a short-term fix. It's not, um, something that probably can sustain the budget ongoing. And so this, uh, the, the process is really going to have to require, um, several different kinds of strategies to, to get to a balanced budget. And that leads to, um, kind of the last slide, which is, is, uh, um, an overview of the key takeaways. As I mentioned, there's going to have to be a series of changes that we, we make to the budget, uh, to the expenditure side and possibly to the revenue side in order to, um, achieve a balanced budget. And ultimately, there has to be some kind of a long-term, uh, revenue or expenditure adjustment in order to, um, maintain our current level, um, and, and achieve a balanced budget. And, um, you know, at this level, I think that this has been discussed previously in terms of personnel positions. Um, with a, a general fund budget of 85% personnel, it's very, very difficult, uh, impossible really to make the level of adjustments that are needed to balance the budget without, without removing positions. So that's going to have to be something that's, uh, reviewed in order to, um, to do our obligation to present a balanced budget.
Uh, so that's the end of it. We will be bringing this back this Saturday at our work session and allow you guys to kind of prioritize some of those items, those, those big ticket items for the budget development. Um, I would say with regards to the fund balance, you know, we did, the 53 million represents taking it down to about 8%. If the board were to go down to 5% or so, it'd take, of course, a super majority to override board policy. But for the purposes of calculating yourselves, about $6 million per percent. So another 3% would be about 18 million.
Questions for the team? Not seeing any online. Oh, member lessons, the floor yours.
Thank you. Um, so this, this document is continuing business as usual next year, which is, we have some big initiatives that we're also working on, which are not business as usual. The rollout of the freshman academies, the move to middle school, um, a continued focus on our, um, elementary reading, although we have purchased, um, that curriculum. Um, and I guess I'm wondering if there are additional, maybe that's beyond the scope of the pro forma, but maybe it would be helpful to know what, what's out there. What's the scale of investment that we would like to have to support the freshman academies, to support the middle school move, to support our board goals? And Garbriels?
Yeah, and that's a great question. I don't know that we can answer all of them, but for the middle school, we have started to kind of put some context around that. We did model it out with the teachers and that's about a wash between the number of teachers you needed, a lower PTR versus the higher PTR with more planning time. So the teachers should be about the same if you move them over. You might, based on our metrics, it might trigger more assistant principals, counselors, security at the middle schools. Uh, but the same token, those, those sixth grade band and orchestra that wouldn't be provided in elementary would be kind of an offset. And we're still trying to work out what those programs would all look like. So we don't have a firm cost estimate on that. For the academies of Anchorage, we did get a sizable grant to help offset some of the cost of that and try to work with our industry partners to shore up some of that. So, you know, those things are big things. And for the REEDS Act, we added a lot of that into our adopted budget. So a lot of the cost of that, those addends and things that would be paid out for the REEDS Act are already included in that comparison.
Member Higgins?
So I guess what we're looking at is presenting to the assembly a budget without any assumption of additional funding from the state. So we're going to see the worst case scenario. Hopefully they're not going to cut beyond what they have right now. But, but we're going to be basing it on that. And then we're going to have to go back with another budget once the state finally makes the decision, uh, provided it changes from that, uh, at that particular point. And once again, if we get one-time funding, then every year is going to be the same approach. Is that a pretty accurate portrayal or?
Yeah, I would say that's a hundred percent accurate. And really the underlying issue with that is each year we go and we can request, uh, the additional allowable local contribution, which has remained the same since about 2017 or so, or maybe slightly declined with enrollment, simply for the fact that even though we can collect additional allowable based on the amount we get in the one-time funds, the timing is such that we've already put in our tax request and already got that approved. So at that point, by the time we get, know we have that money, our taxes are already being collected. We can't go back and revise that part of it.
Thank you. President Billamy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Andy, could you clarify, you, you mentioned early on, um, there was a mention about, of 36 positions going away. Is that through attrition or is that have, is that something the board still need to identify?
Um, that would be based on the current, uh, the, the current PTR. If we were to apply the number of students we have today versus what we budgeted on, we would have about 36 FTE less, just based on students at grade level currently.
Okay. All right. Um, and then there was a mention of a decrease in user fees. Beyond rentals, what, what, what are, what are some of those user fees that were, um, that are decreasing?
Um, so most of that money is in sports and, uh, a lot of the decrease is actually in parking fees. So, but that other user fees is typically, I believe it's going to be sports fees, it's going to be parking. And then, um, I believe it's tuition for, uh, like the lower Yukon, which the, the cost and the tuition are roughly offset. So that's not that much of an issue.
Okay. If I might, Mr. Chair, one more follow-up?
Please proceed.
So, uh, I had a meeting this weekend and there was considerable, um, I think confusion. Whether we build a budget for 24, 25, or we build a budget for 22, I mean, uh, 23, 24. Uh, and I guess, I, I don't know if, if it's fair. Andy, if you could provide some contextualization around why we build the budget the way we build our budget?
So, I mean, we've already done our 23, 24 budget.
Exactly.
That's the year we're in now.
That's where we are.
Right, but it's just the timing such that we call it the FY25 budget because it covers 24, 25. It'll start in June or July, or July.
July, what? Okay. And, and that's exact, so, uh, a BSA that's calculated to start in July 24, that calculation would really need to be more of a 24, 25 calculation. Is that correct?
In terms of the inflated, in the.
Inflationary factors, yes.
Yeah, exactly. So whenever we put that chart up, I believe we'll go back to it.
And I love that chart, by the way.
So this chart does include inflation through FY25. Um, so FY23, 24 and 25 are actually set at 2%, which is really close to historical inflation for Alaska urban CPIU. Uh, we don't have, we won't have numbers for, for calendar, and it's based on the calendar year. So there was a big spike in FY22, about 8% inflation. Um, we expect to have, 23 is probably going to be more than 2%, but we're waiting for those numbers to come out. I think January, February they come out.
Okay.
Um, and then 2% thereafter.
All right. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in really quick and we'll go to member lessons. Since we're still doing Okan time, I figured I'd back us up for just a minute. Could the team speak to why school districts maintain fund balance and what the relationship is between fund balance and things like bond rating?
Yeah, it's a great question. So for Anchorage, I mean, one, we need to maintain fund balance for, in case of emergencies. You saw in 2018, we had the earthquake, we immediately were able to provide some of that fund balance to start getting our facilities repaired and kids back in school. Uh, the second is our cash flow. So based on the timing for, for Anchorage, we don't get any city payments for our, the $220 million we're receiving local taxes until December. So we're kind of floating that cash until that point, then it starts building back up. Um, we did have, based on the last operating budget for, through the legislature, they required a fund balance reporting mechanism now that's, uh, going to be done. We have to report our fund balance as of October 31st and then again as of December 31st. And so what, they're, they're going to see what we reported in Anchorage is a loss of, I think it was close to 25 million. And really, it's not really indicative of where we expect it in the year. But at that point in time, it shows we've lost a considerable amount of money because we haven't gotten those local tax payments. But really just having that money and some of that money is, uh, restricted for like the bond, bond debt, encumbrances for projects that we owe money on or things like that. Self-insurance, there's, there's a lot of things we have money reserved for that, uh, have a legitimate business use.
What, if I, if I may, the other thing that I would add to that is there are some things in statute that we are required to set aside. So for example, for, um, correspondent schools, uh, that have, uh, student allotments, we're actually required by statute to set aside the unspent student allotments and save those year-to-year, whether or not they spend them. That's really not money that's truly available, but it is an amount that can be seen in fund balance.
Helpful information. I'm going to do one quick follow-up, and then Member Lessons will get to your question. And this might be not something that's readily available, and I want to check my understanding first, as kind of part of the question. I believe we've gone through slideshows in the past that discuss that the way the foundation formula works as state funding remains static and Anchorage property values increase, funding effectively shifts from state to local taxpayers. And that figure, the last time I think we looked at it was 17 or 18 million. Is that still generally a correct figure per year, or no?
I believe that number, I think it was 17 million, I want to say, but that was calculated from 2017 forward, I think. But that was the total change. So, you know, we do expect, and that's based on the required local contribution going up with property values and then a direct dollar-for-dollar decrease in state revenue. The property value increase wasn't that steep in this past cycle, so it did go up a little bit, but not a significant amount. Like I think last year was like 8% jump, which was significant to the taxpayers.
And so that's from the last time the BSA was adjusted to current?
Yes, I believe so. I'd have to go back and double-check, but I'm almost positive that that's what it was.
Okay. As maybe time allows, if the most recent figure could be provided, that might be helpful context in the conversations that we have as a board. Member Lessons, your question, please.
Well, you were getting at some of them, so I appreciate them, Mr. Chair. I guess as a follow-up, my memory from some conversations that we've had is that in aggregate, it's been about a $49 million cost shift from the municipality, I mean, from the state to the municipality since 2017.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. As it stacks up, like each year.
Every year, we have been experiencing a cost shift from the state to the municipality. The most recent iteration would have been 17 million, so we could expect that the next iteration would be a little bit more than 17 million. So we'll be pushing north of 65 million, 66, 67 million or so, if we keep stacking up our cost shift. Okay. And then I'm curious about your assessment. So I'm thinking about how quickly we accumulated fund balance this year through our 400 or so vacancies. If we don't have the potential to increase our wages, what is then the risk that you would see in spending down to the 5% board minimum?
I suppose that depends on where we landed with our attrition budget. Like if we did say, okay, there's not wage increases, we expect to have more vacancies, but we also put that money in that, in those attrition accounts more than what we have here on this pro forma, then I would say that risk is pretty low. But if we don't adjust it and we, I don't know, there's a lot of complex things going on there with, if we have to reduce positions and then we don't have as many vacancies going into the year to start, that's going to have a significant effect as well.
I guess this is a follow, it would help me understand, in wanting to do best for our students and provide them the best instructional experience possible next year, understanding the risk benefit of going deeper into the fund balance beyond the 8% board minimum would be helpful. So whatever, I guess, additional information you could piece together, I personally would find beneficial.
Yeah, I think the most significant risk is just the flexibility you have. Once you plan to spin down to that level, that gives you about, you know, $6 million or so remaining in unreserved fund balance. Because the other, you know, 26 or so is set aside for the school bond debt or the bond rating reserve.
Okay, so spending down to the 5% minimum gives us 6%, every 6 million dollars if there's another earthquake and.
Roughly, you could have some cash flow and try to finagle, but it's, yeah, that's how much you would show on the books, about 6 million.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board before we wrap up our work session? Hearing seeing none. Superintendent, any closing remarks from the team before we move to adjourn to executive session?
No, other than thank you for the questions. We're going to take this information and make sure that we're prepared for our Saturday activity where we can talk more about the risk of going down to 5% and the other questions.
And thank you both for presenting and answering the questions today. Much appreciated. With that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts. So maybe by Member Holloman?
Second.
Second by Member Lessons. Any objection? Hearing seeing none, we are adjourned into executive session. Thank you, everyone.